We are live.
Madam Mayor?
Madam Mayor, can you hear us? Madam Mayor, can you hear us?
Mayor Divine, it's Jason Bradford. Can you hear me on the WebEx?
I have no sound. Can anyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Yes, Mayor, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Do you have sound?
I can hear you, Paula.
Yes.
Why don't you log on again, Paula?
Mayor, can you hear us?
For anyone who's tuning in, we're just having some technical difficulties.
Hello?
Please bear with us.
And who? Jason, I have no sound. Jason?
Hi, Ms. Divine, this is Lisa.
Yes, I have no sound.
Go ahead, we can hear you.
You can hear me, okay, but I can't hear.
You don't hear us?
I can't hear a thing, no. There.
Mayor, can you hear us?
Hello?
Yes, Mayor, can you hear us?
No, I can hear you on my phone, but I cannot hear you on my iPad.
Is your volume all the way up on the iPad?
Oh. Yes, it was.
How about you drop off the call and rejoin us? I heard you earlier.
Can you hear me now? You can hear me, but I can't hear you, right?
Correct.
I'll drop off. Sorry.
Again, for anyone tuning in or who's watching this online, we're having some technical difficulties. The mayor was not able to connect with us via audio. This is supposed to be the joint council and housing authority meeting. We have not yet called roll. Do not adjust your television sets or the volume. We'll be back again. Madam Mayor, can you hear us?
I think I can hear you right now, yes. We're good to go.
Okay. I'll turn it over back to you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll be calling the meeting to order at 2:04 of the Glendale City Council and Glendale Housing Authority for August the 10th, 2021. To help slow the transmission of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of the community, city council, as well as boards and commission meetings will continue to be closed to the public for in-person attendance. The public is encouraged, though, to watch and participate from the safety of your homes to practice social distancing. The meetings can be viewed, of course, on local cable charter, Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. We are also streaming in high definition online at glendaleca.gov/live and a free app called ScreenWeave on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire devices. Choose Glendale TV from the menu. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100. City staff will be submitting these questions and comments in real time to the appropriate person during the Glendale Housing Authority joint meeting. Can we have roll call, please, for council?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Present.
Brotman?
Here.
Kusakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
And Mayor Divine?
Here.
And may we have roll call for the housing authority?
Authority member Arginian?
Here.
Agajanian?
Present.
Brotman?
Here.
Divine?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Perazian?
Here.
And Chair Kusakian?
Here.
Thank you. And what's next, please?
The agenda for the Tuesday, August 10th, 2021, joint public meeting of the city council and the housing authority was posted on August 4th, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And next?
Next would be city clerk, minutes of the joint city council and housing authority meeting of June 8th, 2021, June 15th, 2021, June 29th, 2021, and July 13, 2021.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move the item. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Divine?
Yes. And what's next, please?
Next would be community development regarding city council approval of a density bonus and inclusionary housing plan application associated environmental review. Density bonus housing plan case number PDBP2112447. Housing Authority approval of execution of a letter of loan commitment and lease option with LNC and National Core for 340-unit affordable rental housing project for seniors and small families at 515 Pioneer Drive. A. City Council motion to approve density bonus and inclusionary housing plan. B. Housing Authority motion authorizing executive director execution of a letter of loan commitment and lease option with LINC, Link, and National Core. C. Resolution of appropriation in the amount of $10 million for the funding of the 515 Pioneer Drive project.
Thank you. And in the absence of City Manager Ruby Kalanian, we have John Tuktalian. John?
Thank you, Mayor Divine, members of the city council and housing authority. I'm going to refer directly over to Mike Fortney from our community development department, who will go ahead and provide you a presentation on this particular item.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tuktalian. Good afternoon. Mayor Divine and city council members, Chair Kusakian and Housing Authority Board members. I'm Mike Fortney, Principal Housing Project Manager for the city of Glendale, presenting the project at 515 Pioneer Drive. First, I just wanted to remind, the staff is recommending that the city council approve the density bonus for the project and asking that the housing authority approve the letter of loan commitment and lease option for the project. Hopefully, I got this PowerPoint working right? Yes, okay, great. First, just a brief history. We acquired the site in October of 2019. We acquired the site, $12,400,000. The total acquisition was 13.1 when you count relocation and FFNE, that's furniture fixtures, equipment. We... After we acquired the site, we wrapped up another project, Vista Grande Court, our 66-unit senior project. Once that was done, we generated the RFP. That hit the streets in July of 2020. And I believe we had 11 different developers respond to that RFP. We ultimately selected Link Housing and National Core, who partnered on the RFP response. They were the same developers that had built Vista Grande Court, so they have some experience here in Glendale. There's a number of reasons why the staff recommended and ultimately the housing authority chose Link National Core. One of the reasons was the unit count was higher than any other. But there was a number of reasons. Of course, Link National Core has a track record now in Glendale delivering quality projects. The pro forma... In particular, we were interested in a project that could potentially be financed in a single phase. So for those reasons and a number of other reasons, Link National Core was granted an exclusive negotiating agreement. So from there, staff got to work with Link National Core, not only to work on refining their proposal, getting it ready for the entitlement approval, but also in negotiating the lease option and the letter of loan commitment. So briefly, the product summary. We're talking about 340 units in total. It's a mix of seniors and small families. It does not have any three bedrooms, so it's not technically classified as a large family project. Of the 340 units, we have 32 studios and the lion's share at 260 being one-bedroom units. We also have 45 two-bedroom units. And then we have, in addition to that, three more two-bedroom units that will be managers' units. If you look at the project, and we'll show you that in just a moment, there's three separate buildings, and there will be a resident manager in each of those separate buildings. So again, I believe it's February that the housing authority approved an exclusive negotiating agreement with Link National Core. Their request was for $10 million from the housing authority. That is in addition to the $12.4, really $13.1 million that we've already invested in the project with site acquisition, relocation of AT&amp;T, and some of the furniture fixtures and equipment that remains. It's not... Okay. There's an image of the site, an aerial, if you would. What the developer tried to do, and this is part of why we selected the team, they tried to step the project down along Pioneer Drive. So you'll see no more than two-story buildings along Pioneer, towards that Kennelworth cul-de-sac. It's left vacant further east. And then we see again, two stories. And then it does step up to, I believe, four stories along Pioneer and Pacific. And then towards the back of the project, it does go up to five stories. We talked about this during the RFP process, too, that there's Fremont Park over... Just on the other side of the freeway, there is a pedestrian tunnel that goes underneath that freeway. Part of their proposal is to improve that pedestrian tunnel. It's not a very welcoming improvement right now. So things like lighting, just cleaning the place up, some public art, perhaps closed-circuit television for security reasons. That's all part of the proposed project to really make access to Fremont Park better. Okay, thank you. We had also talked a little bit about improving the Kennelworth cul-de-sac. That is something the housing authority has expressed an interest in doing. It's something the staff very much interested in doing. I'm not prepared to talk about that in great detail today only because we have so much in front of us. But there is a property owner that owned vacant, a vacant triangular-shaped lot on the other side of Kennelworth. So I don't think there's a lot we can do in terms of improving that cul-de-sac. I don't think we can vacate it without working out something with that property owner or even potentially acquiring that site, which would then give us the opportunity to increase public open space. But that is something we'll bring back to you. So first off is CEQA. The project is exempt from CEQA as a Class 32 infill development project. The developer, Link National Core, hired Urban Crossroads to do a number of studies. Trip generation, air quality, noise impact. They also did a health risk assessment. All of these things we did for the project in order to determine that is exempt from CEQA. And in terms of the density bonus, it's 100% affordable under state density bonus law. Because it is 100% affordable and it is within a half mile of a major transit stop, it qualifies for unlimited density bonus, additional height, zero parking, and four incentives and concessions. So that's what the project's entitled to once it's an affordable project, 100% and under state density bonus law. Our outside council determined that, and she's very conservative when it comes to determining whether it's 100% affordable under state law or not. So zoning currently only allows for 40 units. So we're asking for a very significant density bonus for the site of 750% in order to achieve that 340 units on site.
Excuse me?
Of course.
Go ahead, Councilmember Agajanian.
Can you go back to previous page, please?
Yes.
Okay. Density bonus of 750. And you said here will be unlimited. What do you mean by unlimited? How many more units could be added? Is this the maximum, 340 units? Because it's close to the transportation hub. And you say, basically, there is no limit? How many units?
Yes, you're right. So the project is eligible for an unlimited amount of density bonus because it's 100% affordable. But it's proposed as a 340-unit project that translates into a 750% density bonus that the developer is seeking. But they're eligible for an unlimited density bonus, which means you're really only limited to how much you can build on the site. You know, there's financial restrictions. There's the site itself that restricts you in some way. But you can... There is no limit in terms of how much density bonus you can seek.
So we can make like 450 units in there?
I mean, yes. Strictly speaking, in perspective of the unlimited density bonus, whether or not you could actually fit 450 units on the site, I don't know the answer to that, but yes, in theory, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So I want to get a little bit more specific on the density bonus. We're asking... The developer, I should say, is asking for four incentives. They're asking for a reduction in various streetfront, street-side, and interior setbacks. I want to point out, this came up in the projects that you recently approved at 90920 East Broadway, actually specifically 900 East Broadway, where, under density bonus projects, we bundle the setbacks. We don't call out each setback as specific incentives. That's something, as I understand it, the answer then is still the answer now. That is how Glendale proceeds. If that's something that the council wishes to discuss, that's fine. But that's how we've done it on this project because it's the way we've done it on all of our density bonus projects. I don't know if the city attorney's office would like to add more to it? No? At this time, okay. So in addition to that incentive, we also have a reduction in unit size. Studios as low as 360 square feet. One bedrooms... The lowest, the smallest one-bedroom in the project is 530 square feet versus 600 square feet required by code. And in the two bedrooms, the smallest one is 750 square feet versus 800 square feet under code. A third incentive is increase in building height from 69 feet to 75 feet. And I just wanted to say, the code only allows 36 feet under our 3050. The density bonus allows an additional 33 feet. So we're actually... The developer is seeking an additional six feet above that. So it's entitled, per code, at 33 feet. Density bonus allows an additional 36 feet to get it to 69. They are asking as an incentive for that additional six feet. And naturally, the project is the 75 feet in height all throughout the project. That's at its height on the sections of the building that are five stories or greater. And then finally, the fourth incentive?
I have a question.
Oh, yes, of course.
Okay. Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, just getting back to the question that Councilmember Agajanian had about the density bonus unlimited. So it's unlimited density, but when it comes to height, the density bonus does have a limit?
That is correct, yes. Density bonus allows an additional 36 feet. And if you want more height than that, then you have to ask for this incentive or a waiver.
Okay, in theory... Okay, so in theory, you could keep going up, but you would have to... We would have to approve an additional waiver for that?
Yes, which requires the findings. That means you couldn't build a project otherwise.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Excuse me. You said there... Excuse me, Madam Mayor. You said that they ask for six feet bonus or height to be increased. What they gonna use it for? I mean, the ceiling inside, outside? How that six feet? Why they need that six feet? I'm trying to figure out. Is it on one level or entire level will be... Each level will be kind of a... Height will be increased? What they gonna use it for, that six feet?
I understand the question. It's not 75 feet throughout the project. There are parts of the project that are five stories. I think KFA, the designer of the project, could answer your question if KFA is available to answer that directly. I don't want to say... I don't want to state it incorrectly, what that additional six feet is needed for in elements of the project.
I'm happy to answer that, Mike Fortney.
Yes, yeah, that's what I was hoping for. Thank you. Karen?
Okay, great. Yes, so we do have quite a long site, and we have 10-foot of slope additionally along this site. So the 75 feet is not throughout the project, and it is only a portion of it where we have five stories. But just by code, to be conservative, the highest point of the site is 75 feet, but that's not throughout the project.
No, I understand. My question is, you're gonna ask six feet height? Extra height? Is that will be on each level? Let's say if it's four level, either four-story side, each level of that unit, one and a half feet will be added to the unit? Or what's it gonna be used? I'm trying to understand what you're gonna use it for.
Yeah, I can answer that. And again, this is Karen Felipe from KFA. And so really, what we need is to have that fifth story. So this is not added to each level, but just to make that fifth story feasible in the portions that are above that height from the ground plane.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Great. And thank you, Karen, for your help. Continuing on. So we've spoken about the four incentives. In addition to that, they're requesting two waivers. The first one being an increase in floor area ratio, a substantial increase from .65 to 1 to 2.45 to 1. And the second one is an increase in lot coverage from 50% to 58%. So that's what we're looking for under density bonus. Naturally, the 750% density bonus, and then the four incentives and the two waivers. Next, I wanted to get into the income limits. This is pertaining to the future residents of our project. The ranges you see here are the ranges for extremely low income, which is 30% of area median income or less. Very low income is between 30 and 50% of area median income. And then low income is 50 to 80% AMI. So what you're seeing then is, depending on the number of persons in a household and the AMI they fall into, what is the maximum income annually they can earn? And those numbers are calculated off of 30, 50, or 80%. I don't want to mislead anybody by saying, as an example, under extremely low income, we have 0 to 30. That's a range. Nobody can occupy a unit in the project with 0% AMI because that means they have zero income, and there is rent that needs to be paid. It's reduced rent, obviously, but... So that's only there to represent the range of extremely low income.
I think Councilmember Agajanian has a question for you.
Okay.
I just want to make sure these are the maximum. This is not minimum they have to have the income. It's maximum what they have to have, right?
That is exactly right. Thank you for clarifying that. In terms of minimum income, Glendale does not set a minimum. It's typically, half of the monthly rent is your minimum gross income. That's standard. And I'm almost certain, Link Core, correct me if I'm wrong, that's your standard that you apply to projects in terms of the minimum income, that it's twice monthly rent. So that's what that would translate to. So if you wanted to know, do I earn enough to live in one of these units? You would look at, and I'm going to show you the rents, I would need to make at least twice what that rent amount is.
Okay, thank you.
The gross or the net, Mike?
Gross.
Okay.
Mike, I have a question. And this may seem like a silly question, but I'm curious, I'm sure others are.
Councilmember Kusakian?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if someone is making, a family, a household of three, making $85,000, and you said that's the maximum, and they happen to get a raise, and all of a sudden, they're making $90,000, which doesn't necessarily, after taxes, do much to change a person's day-to-day quality of life. Will have some very, we can all agree, a minimal impact. What happens to the household, then?
Right now, nothing. They would be able to stay in the unit.
Good.
There's been some discussion at a staff level, and there may be interest in bringing that sort of scenario to the housing authority's attention for potentially a policy direction. And, you know, in a case where you're talking, the income goes from $85,000 to, say, $90,000, not a huge, significant increase, although I'm sure they would appreciate that. But we're talking about, there are times when that income really goes up. And if it goes up too much, it threatens the project. It threatens the project's tax status as an exempt project. If you get enough of those, and I've seen it happen in the Bay Area and other places where a large portion of the population that was very low and low are now in a mod to higher level. And it really does put the project at risk. Not that they can't afford it, but because the tax exemption is gone. So it may be something we'd like to bring back to you.
Well, I mean, there's no rush to it. I mean, we ought to think about how we can achieve the goals that we're trying to do by... Trying to achieve by having these types of projects. But, you know, I think of real-world scenarios where you have a household of three. Perhaps it's a single parent with two kids, and eventually, one of the kids goes and gets their first job. It could be, you know, flipping hamburgers somewhere or whatever it be. And all of a sudden, that person is making $15,000, $20,000, which in LA is absolute, is equivalent of nothing. You're living way below the poverty line. But all of a sudden, that has, by our standards, put them at a quote-unquote "significant increase." I don't want that family to then be told, you know what, you're making a lot. Thank you, but no, thank you, you gotta leave. Just for us to put realistic... Figure out what our goals are, put realistic measures as to how we account for that. And of course, as always, make sure that no one's necessarily abusing council or the taxpayers' generosity.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, so now we get into unit mix and rents. So here, on this table, what we've done is we've broken down all the units in the project, both in terms of the size of the unit, whether it's a studio, one or two-bedroom, and then the number of units at that size and the AMI it is targeting. We also show gross rent, the estimated utility allowance, and then net rent. And these are all 21 TCAC rents. These numbers will change by the time the project, you know, is implemented. Every year, the rents, they get updated. So as an example, the least expensive unit in this project would be studios at 30% AMI. This must be a typo. The studio, 18, 30%, 621. I'm gonna have to double-check that. I'm gonna have to double-check that. That's gotta be at 40%. Otherwise, it'd be the same gross rent as the 14. Let me double-check that and get back to you. It may be a function of getting the project 100% qualified under state density bonus law. I'll have to get back to you and clarify that. I just noticed that now. So then the most expensive unit in this project would be a two-bedroom targeting 80%, where the net rent after utility allowance would be just over $2,000. That does sound like a lot for an affordable project. I just would remind you that this is a, this project's being financed with 4%. The project can go to 80% AMI. We would love to target lower income. But it just increases the subsidy from the Housing Authority in order to do that. We can add to the discussion, but it is very expensive to say, take an 80% AMI targeted unit and bring it down to, say, 60%. The other thing, and I'd mentioned this when we were discussing Broadway, we used to only do projects capped at 60% AMI. It's only been recently that TCAC has allowed targeting of incomes at 80% AMI. They still have to average out at, I believe it's 60% or less on a 4% deal. Whereas you're accustomed to 9% deals, which is most of the projects we've done to date, where the average is lower than that. So we're putting forward what we think's the best unit mix and AMI targeting based on how much we're putting into the project and how much we think we can get in tax credits and still be competitive with all the projects up and down the state.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Let's come back. Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's go, yeah. I discussed this before, that 80% AMI is kind of a problematic because the rent is so high, in my opinion. And I think we discussed before that you would look through something. I can't remember what we have discussed. Do you remember exactly that 80% AMI? Is there any way anything can be done? I mean, two-bedroom for 2,128, other than this is a new building. It's going to be 2,128 is not cheap. It's not affordable, basically. That's what I'm trying to say.
And I don't, I acknowledge what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. It is far below what a market rate, brand-new two-bedroom unit would cost, but it's still, you know, still $2,000. The problem we have is, in order to get that down to, say, a 60% unit, it just, it takes an additional subsidy from us, and it's a substantial subsidy. I didn't do the math and calculate what the delta is on our subsidy between an 80% and 60% on a two-bedroom or one-bedroom. I could do that. I did it on Broadway, and it was substantial.
You have it, you have it on one-bedroom, 60%, and one-bedroom, 80%. The difference is almost like $434.
Yeah, the delta between the rents is right here in front of you. What I'm saying is, to calculate the delta on the subsidy required for us to get to that, I don't have that information in front of you, but it's something I can calculate for you. But if memory serves me, when I did that math on Broadway, it was somewhere to the tune of $90,000 per unit in additional subsidy to get an 80% unit down to 60. It's a substantial investment to get that deeper income targeting.
Okay. May I?
Councilmember Brodmann?
Yeah, somewhat following up on this. Mike, could you explain? So take, for instance, this two-bedroom unit at the very bottom. The net rent is 2,036, and that's for somebody that's making a maximum of 80% AMI. Does that 2,036 represent 30% of AMI? Or how is that tied into the income that the eligible person there has earned?
Oh, so how is the gross rent calculated?
Yeah, exactly. How is, how is, how do we come up with that 2,128 number? I know it's somehow related to the income in that bracket, but could you just tell me precisely, or tell us precisely, how that works?
Yes, so we go back to the, we go back to the income. And on a rental project, I believe it is 30%, we multiply by 30%, then divide by 12 to get a monthly. And then that would be your max gross monthly rent for that, for that AMI. So it's a function of the maximum income multiplied by .3 divided by 12. And that, so that, it's just, it's just the calculation.
So you go, you go to, just to make sure I understand, you go to the maximum for that category? And then it's 30% of that maximum is, is what you would pay? 30% of whatever the monthly value would be, right?
You do have that correct, Councilmember Brodmann.
Even though, even though many people, because it's a range, many people are not at the top of the range. But nonetheless, it would be 30% of somebody who's at the top of the range, essentially.
So, you know, I'm glad you're asking this question. When you calculate rent on a low unit, the income range is 50 to 80%. But the rent is actually calculated at 60%, regardless of where you fall. So if you, if you are a low income and you're at 65, 70, 75, approaching 80%, the max rent is still calculated at 60% AMI. Very low, though, it's calculated on that, on that height, which is 50%. And that's not something Glendale does specifically. That's industry-wide. So I do need to make that clarification. If you're in that low range of 50, 51 to 80%, it's actually calculated at the 60% AMI level.
Oh, so they, different brackets kind of have a different formula?
That's right, yes.
Okay, but how each individual comes out, you know, because each individual's income is gonna range within that bracket, it could be slightly more than 30% of their income or slightly less?
That's exactly right. We don't calculate an individual's rent based on an individual's income. That, you know, their income could change, and in their, it would be a huge burden to kind of implement that. So we do that, many jurisdictions do the same thing. That they'll put them in that range and then charge the appropriate rent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I think I have... Yes, okay. I did want to make one clarification. The studios, 18, 30%, that 621 rent? That is correct for a 30% AMI? Where you see 14 units, 30% gross rent? That's, it's not exactly 30%. What we were trying to do there is, we were trying to achieve the 100% affordable under state density bonus law, which is very difficult to do. So in order to achieve that, we had to take some of our 30% units and lower the rent even further in order to qualify as a 100% affordable project. So it's not, it's not an error to say that these units are, have higher rents, or that there was some miscalculation. We intentionally brought some of those 30% AMI units that are studios below what would normally be a max rent. And that, again, was to achieve that 100% affordable under state density bonus law. If that, I hope that makes sense.
Thank you. Mr. Fortney, Mr. Agajanian has a question for you.
Yes, I'd like to know these, for my knowledge, that is, on the gross rent. These are, these are projected numbers. They're not, how to say? They're compared, in comparison with current market values, am I correct?
I apologize. Could you, I didn't hear the very tail end of that. Could you repeat the question?
Yes, what I want to know is, these numbers on the gross rent, they are in comparison with current market values?
Actually, no. They're independent of market rents. They are a calculation based on area median income. So they are calculated, again, at .3 times that AMI range, then divided by 12. So it's, it's not, it's, there's no connection, no direct connection between a market rate rent and these affordable rents. The rents are driven by area median income.
I see, I see.
Just coincidentally, we know in Glendale, market rate rents, right now, are, it does depend on the unit size, but it's roughly 120 to 130, 35% AMI. We know that, so that kind of gives you an idea how these rents translate in terms of what the, what the market rate rent for a unit of this size would run you.
All right? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Fortney.
I have a question, Ms. Mayor.
Go ahead, Laura.
So, maybe I misunderstood. How many units is going to be there? 340, right?
That's correct. There's 340 total units, yes.
Total units. And in those 40 units, the manager's units are not included?
The 340 includes three units. So there'll be 337
I know.
Affordable units.
37?
330.
Two.
So there's 340 total units, three will be manager units, and that leaves us 337 units. That would be affordable units for the tenants with income and rent restrictions.
Yeah.
Okay.
In other words, there's a manager's unit in each building. Right?
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, great. So wanted to talk about sources of funds. We're talking about a very expensive project, obviously, at 340 units, total $143 million. Most of that, or nearly half of that, comes from a conventional construction loan. And then we have, again, the request from the Housing Authority, $12,400,000, that's the, that's the amount that we paid for the land. An additional $10 million that is being requested of us as gap financing. We have interest, of course, developer fee contribution. That's the amount of developer fee and deferred fee that the project, the developer would be entitled to, that they are deferring, putting back into the project. These numbers are really big. I understand that. The project's also very large. There's another reason why. The 4% bond deal is just worth differently than the 9%. 9%, the developer fees are capped quite a bit lower than on a 4%. But on the 4% deal, the developer is expected to defer those fees. I can't really explain why the 4% and 9% operate exactly like that, but that is why you're seeing such large numbers on deferred fee from the developer. The general partner cap of contribution of $100, I know that sounds trivial. It's pretty standard for these projects. And then you see the tax credit equity that we're looking for. That's 22, just over $22 million. So a very, very large amount. In total, the project per unit is $421,000, almost $500 per unit. That's pretty standard, maybe a little bit less, actually, than most, many of our projects. We run around $450,000 to $460,000 per unit. That's probably what we average in Glendale. And I would tell you, compare that to Santa Monica. I think there, I've seen projects at $650,000, $700,000 per unit, where actually, per unit is as high as that sounds. If you compare that to some of the jurisdictions in LA County, it's quite a bit lower. And I'm looking at the number, and I can see how big that number is. So this is a little bit different. This is source of funds at perm. So once the project gets built, and we can, we pay off that construction loan, then we convert, it's what we call perm conversion. We convert to a permanent loan. So that perm loan would look at $35 million. Our land loan of $12.4 and our gap loan of $10 million still be there during perm. That would be repaid, you know, via residual receipts payments. The interest, nearly $2 million. Again, developer's still deferring fee after perm conversion. That, too, would get paid through residual receipts. And now we're looking at a huge amount of tax credits, $74.46 million. The reason why we can't go a 9% deal on something like this, or even 127-unit deal at 900's Broadway, is because you can't get more than $25 million in tax credits. So that's the sources, both construction and perm. If, and I don't want to jinx us, if we're unable to secure the tax credits, which we'll apply for next month, there is another funding source that the project would be eligible to apply for early next year in time for us to then apply again for 4%. Again, assuming we didn't get it this time. And that will, that will make us even more competitive than we are now. But I don't want to get it out of ourselves. Fingers crossed we get funded the first time. So very quickly, because we've talked so much about it, summary of the terms, the letter of loan commitment. We know this project will target between 30 and 80% area median income. I say for a minimum period of 55 years. That'll almost certainly be 65 years, potentially 75 years. We have to show that our loans to the project will be paid off through residual receipts. We have to show that. So our loans will last, and so the lease will have to last. And therefore, we will keep the affordability restrictions in place. We won't lease the project to Link Core and allow them to just charge market rate after 55 years. So those affordability covenants will be tied to the lease. Housing Authority, total assistance to the project, $22.4 million. That's the land plus the $10 million gap. That, because the project is so huge, translates to less than $66,000 per unit. That is far away the lowest subsidy per unit in the 14 years I've been here. And I could probably go seven years in San Diego before that. I think, if memory serves me, the best per-unit subsidy we have had in the last 15 years might have been the Arts Colony project at $90,000. Our average has been about $140,000. So here, we're looking at $66,000 per unit. And again, it's, the assistance is in a residual receipts loan secured by a deed of trust. So residual receipts will pay for ultimately the $22.4 million we invest in the project. That $22.4 is not a grant. It is a loan that does have to be repaid. And then it's important to also say, on the letter of loan commitment, December 31st, or it should say 31st, my apologies on that, 2022, so the end of calendar year '22, if Link National Corp. are unable to secure tax credits, they have one shot at it this year, in next month. They have, I believe, four shots at it next year. If by the end of the calendar year, they're unable to do it, we have the right to then kind of take a step back and say, do we want to continue with Link National Corp. and try to get these? Do we want to, you know, bring on a different developer? What do we want to do? So the letter of loan commitment does expire at the end of calendar year next year.
Excuse me?
That, Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes. The reason for having that Housing Authority's assistance per unit is low is because, one reason is number of units, right? The smaller project, so we have to help more. This being a large project, so brought that assistance to $65,000, right?
That's absolutely right. Economy's of scale. That's, that is why the assistance to the project is what it is. It's also, to a degree, a gamble in terms of how much tax credits we're requesting versus how much we could put in, how competitive we could be. But, but yes, for the most part, it's economy's of scale.
Thank you.
Okay. And then briefly on the lease option, the lease option, again, just like the letter of loan, it expires December 31st, 2022. Yeah, it automatically expires if Link National Corp. are unable to secure tax credits before the end of the calendar year. Capitalized value of the annual rent, that's land, will be $12.4. That's an promissory note to Link Corp. We will eventually then bring a lease, a ground lease for the project. We will bring that with the Affordable Housing Agreement. We'll try to do it once we believe we have got a tax credit. agreement. We'll try to do it once we believe we have got a, a tax credit commitment. We'd like to do it before the actual award of tax credits, um, which would be sometime around the end of the calendar year if we're awarded in, in September. Um, but that, that would be the goal. And again, I say, ground lease will be as long as the affordability covenants are in place. That's a minimum 55 years, uh, per law. However, in order to, to show that the, the, the loans to the project will be paid, we almost, it's inevitably that we have to extend out, uh, the, the life of the project. So we extend out that lease as long as we need to do it, whether it's 65 years or 75 years. Those numbers will bear out and we'll, you'll know that when we bring the AHA. But it's important to say, those affordability covenants will last right alongside that lease. So, they won't be leasing the project at market. Uh, and then the fiscal impact, um, we've already acquired the land, we did that 20 months ago, 22 months ago. Uh, we're asking for an additional $10 million in gap financing. Uh, we're looking at, uh, low and moderate income housing, $4,600,000. Um, tax allocation bonds, these are bonds that we, um, issued back in 2012. It's essentially low and moderate income housing asset funds, it's just the bond proceeds. Um, we used some of the bond proceeds when we acquired the site. Um, frankly, we could have used them all just to acquire the site, but we're putting them in now. Um, we have $4,079,000 in Measure S dollars. What I wanted to just kind of mention here, what, what we intend to do is back that number down by $2,017,000. We just can't do it yet. And the reason we can't do that yet is because we can't commit home dollars now, um, until the project is fully financed. So, once we have a commitment of tax credits, we can then go through the process, request for lease of funds, it's, it's a, it's not a, it's not a complicated process. But it's a process I can't initiate yet. I have to wait for that commitment of funds. Once we do that, we will then reimburse the Measure S dollars that you've committed. Um, another thing I just wanted to point out with this is, we're restricting the amount of low and moderate income housing asset funds into the project. If you recall, in December of 2020, we brought you a, a low mod report, which we bring annually. That report, because of our spending in the last couple of years, it, it, it says basically, we have to spend 100% of our redevelopment dollars on extremely low income. So, the $4.6 million you see here, those are funding the extremely low income units in the property. And that's, and that's done purposely so that we meet the, the requirements of that five-year rule. I think there's two more years left in that rule, so when we spend any more low mod dollars, it has to be exclusively for extremely low income qualifying folks. So that's, that's the reason why we're having to use more Measure S on this project than we would like. But we will be putting in that $2 million in home dollars once we can. If I didn't mention it, I just wanted to mention it briefly, the same thing applies to both 900 and 920 East Broadway. We can back out, I believe on that project, a roughly $1,814,000 comes to mind, in home dollars. We can put into those two also, and then also back out our, our Measure S there. Um, and that will all come to you at, at the AHA. So then, next steps, uh, density bonus, letter of loan commitment and lease option. If those are all approved, then Link National Core will apply next month, uh, for tax credits. We're tentatively scheduled also later next month, December, or September 23rd, for design review board approval. Um, and then we will begin at a staff level to negotiate the affordable housing agreement, that'll include the lease, um, and bring that to you for approval. Again, we'll try to do that prior to the receipt of tax credits. Assuming we get the tax credits after the density bonus is approved, let alone lease option, all those are approved, uh, construction can then commence, um, you know, we'd have to apply for the building permits, um, any, security additional funding if needed, um, the construction loan being a big one. Uh, we would then get, do the process of the, uh, home dollars, and then immediately following securing, uh, building permits, we'd begin construction, targeting summer 2024 to deliver the project. Um, and as with all of our projects, roughly six months, maybe even eight months prior to our anticipated certificate of occupancy, we start that marketing and lease up process. So that once those units are built, we can start moving folks right in. Uh, I, let me see. Um, and then just to go over the council's alternatives, uh, the council may obviously approve the density bonus and the inclusionary housing plan, um, authorize the executive director to, um, execute the letter of loan commitment and lease option as presented, that would allow Link National Core to pursue the 4% tax credits next month. Um, authorize, I've already said the letter of loan commitment. And, yes, sorry, the resolution of appropriation, the amount of $10 million. That's, uh, City Council. Thank you. As an alternative, City Council may elect not to approve the density bonus and inclusionary housing plan for the 340 units. Uh, Housing Authority may elect not to authorize execution of the letter of loan commitment, lease option, or resolution appropriation, thank you City Attorney's Office. Um, and then alternatively, City Council or Housing Authority, really you could consider any alternative to the proposed project, not considered by staff. Staff would then, of course, analyze whatever alternative you wanted to pursue and get back to you with our best guess in terms of what that may have, uh, you know, in impact, time-wise, cost-wise, anything else with the project. Um, the lastly, what I wanted to end with, well, a couple of things. Just quickly, I wanted to say, it was an enormous team effort on staff's side, City Attorney's Office planning. Um, I don't want to take up too much time. I'm greatly, I'm so appreciative of everybody on the staff side. Link National Core, we had a lot of consultants working on this project as well. It's the largest project we've ever pursued, uh, so that's, it's very, very exciting. Um, but I did also want to say, beginning, I think, Sunday and through today, I have probably received, my guess would be two dozen emails from residents that live on 515 Pioneer Drive. Uh, most have forwarded, um, a, a letter that they outlined with roughly eight concerns or so that they have with the project. Um, so I wanted to make that clear to the Housing Authority and the Council that we've received that. Um, I've tried to acknowledge receipt of that to each of the, the folks that emailed me. Um, we have met as, as staff to review the concerns that they have. We're happy to meet with the community. We've only, to date, we've not had any community meetings. We've only had interactions with those who've reached out to us. And for those that did reach out to us in the past couple of months, naturally we share whatever information we do have. Uh, there's a lot of information at the E&amp;A that we were happy to share with them. Um, so I did want you to know about that also. Um, with that, I can leave it open for questions. We have Link National Core and our consultants all on standby to answer questions if you, if you would like. And with that, I'll, I'll, I'll stop sharing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fortney, very much for the, uh, the report. Um, Councilmember Brotman, I see your hand is up.
Thank you very much, Mayor Devine. Um, and, and Mike, thanks to you. I'm always very impressed with, uh, the projects that you bring to us and the way you describe them is, is, makes something that is incredibly complicated, uh, seem, uh, at least basically understandable. So, thank you for that. Um, I, I wanted to, um, talk about something I brought up in our briefing, which is parking. Um, because I, I see that we're putting in 342 parking spaces. We're not required to, but that's what's being proposed. I was interested if you could talk about, um, the level of parking that we, um, or the parking ratio that we applied in, in Vista Grande Court and some of our other developments, how that compares, because my understanding is that, um, we have less than one parking stall per unit in Vista Grande Court. I don't know about the others. And also, you know, what is this costing us? Because, um, if we are, um, if we are building more parking than we need to, obviously that costs money and, and if we didn't, that could go back to the city or reducing the, uh, the amount we have to contribute, or it could allow us to lower the affordability, um, criteria, or do many other things, right? So, could you just address that question?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Brotman. I'd be happy to, and I, I appreciate the compliment. Um, we did, I had sufficient time between yesterday and today to take a look at the parking. Um, we, we feel on, as staff, and I've spoken to Link and to Core, we think one-to-one is, we would be reluctant, probably to recommend anything less than the ratio that's provided. But we still wanted to kind of pursue that and look and see what would be the savings, because obviously there would be a savings, and potentially what could that do for us in terms of either reduced, uh, uh, participation financially or better yet, deeper affordability targeting. Uh, I was really disappointed. If we went with a ratio that we had for like Vista Grande Court of 0.65 spaces per unit, first off, Vista Grande Court is exclusively for seniors. It doesn't, it, I think it has six two-bedrooms and 61 bedrooms versus this one with a substantial number of two-bedrooms. And it's small family versus, so we've got a bigger demand. Um, family projects, we have overparked in years past. We, we built some per code. Um, others, we typically will do one space per one-bedroom and two spaces per two- and three-bedroom. That's what we've done in the past. Vista Grande Court, I can tell you, 0.65 is not underparked. Um, but we, we're fearful that this project would be at anything less than one. Um, but what I was really disappointed on was what the fiscal impact would be. And I, granted, it's rough numbers, but what it does, first off, we don't get to eliminate a single level of parking. If you calculate 340 at 0.65, you're basically eliminating 120 stalls. There's, I believe, 180 or 170, 160 per, per floor. So, it doesn't eliminate the, uh, ability to eliminate the second P2 level. That would probably give us a really good savings. But even if you, you know, estimate conservatively, uh, at about $30,000 a stall, 120 stalls, you're talking about 3.5, 3.6 million dollars in savings. The problem with it though, is, in particular on the 4%, it takes your eligible basis off. So when you run the numbers through the tax credit, or the, yeah, the tax credit app, your windfall is, is marginal at best, because you're taking away eligible costs of the project. Long story short, I don't think we will get more than a dozen, maybe 20, units that would, that we could reduce in AMI, and it wouldn't be like 80 down to 60. It, it's actually, it, it, I was disappointed, I'll be very honest, that the fiscal impact wasn't greater than that. Now, we couldn't achieve a better, a better affordability level, um, even though I, I, I would be very comfortable to recommend less than one unit, uh, one parking stall per unit.
Okay. Wait, oh.
Go ahead.
I have other questions, but we could come back to that, um, if you want. I, I just, yeah, I want to thank you for that answer. That, that was very comprehensive and, uh, I'm not looking to create park, parking problems for the sake of parking problems. If we're not gonna, if it's not a substantial financial benefit, then, uh, and, and your opinion is that we would be looking at a problem if we had fewer parking, then, then I'm satisfied with that answer.
Okay.
Should I?
Go ahead. Continue, Mr. Brotman, and then we'll get to, uh, Councilmember Ogajianian.
Okay. I just, I wanted to check on, I think, some of the things that I'm sure I brought up before, because I, I try to always bring them up. Um, can you just confirm again, this is an all-electric building. We won't be running the costs, uh, or, or incurring the cost of running gas, uh, pipes into the building. That's one question. And then kind of, uh, in the same theme of sustainability, um, can you discuss what's been done, if anything, to, um, create, uh, the capability that we can, um, do organic sorting, that we can meet our SB 1383 requirements? Um, if there's any kind of space issues for bins, um, or, or anything like that, if you could touch on that. And then, the last one I was, I was thinking about, you know, because we're going to be talking about water this app, this evening, and, um, one of the things I don't think we've done, but some cities have done with projects, is running purple pipes into the project so that you can use recycled water in your, in your toilets. Um, and also in your, in your, in your irrigation. So, um, I don't know if that's been considered, if that could be considered. But if you could just address, uh, those three questions, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Brotman, I'm gonna take the simplest of the three, uh, and I will confirm that the product is 100% electric. Um, in terms of the purple lines, um, we've talked about it on other projects. I would have to check really with Public Works to find out where those purple lines are, uh, and what would be required of us to, to, what, what we would or should do on our project in order to be ready in case a purple line, if it's not already there, if it is penciled to go along Pioneer. Um, I, I don't know the answer to that. Um, and then your specific question, I believe, was SB 1383?
13, I always forget the number. Yeah, I think it was SB 1383.
I would ask somebody from National Core or Link, or perhaps Karen with KFA, if, if one of you could address that question?
Uh, yes, this is Karen Felipe from KFA. I'm happy to address that question. Um, right now we are housing the trash recycling in the P1 level or in the parking levels. So, we have already looked at the impacts of adding composting, and we don't have a space issue. So, there's no issue with that.
To, okay, it's not, not composting yourself, you mean to be able to collect organics from the residents. Uh, because they would have to collect them, you know, in a pail in their kitchen, rather than put them in their regular trash. And then somehow, they would have to have a way to bring that, get that into the green waste bin, right? Because that's how we're going to be doing it. How, um, and I don't know the mechanism there, whether you're gonna have something on a chute or some, some way on each floor. How are you gonna, how are you gonna make sure that we're able to do that?
Uh, right now we do have chutes for trash and recycling. We have not studied chutes, um, additionally, but we do have space in the parking to house bins. So, I think it's definitely achievable to incorporate if chutes are the way. Or if not, we would just have residents take them to the parking, uh, where the green bins would be located.
Yeah. And I don't know what the right answer is, but it just, okay. So, I just want to make sure you're thinking about it and you've got some plans for it. Okay. And then, yeah, the gray water, I don't know. I think, I forget whether we have gray water going to Fremont Park, or if not, we're, we're planning on it. But, um, you know, I mean, so I think what some cities are doing is they're just, they're, they're, they're piping the, the, the developments in anticipation of being able to bring recycled water. And, and we have a lot of recycled water, we end up throwing away into the river. Um, so the more we can find sources for it, I think GWP or Public Works will tell you that that's something we want. So, anyway, I'll leave it there though. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Ogajianian?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Fortney and, uh, staff for bringing this important item forward. I just wanna, um, the reason I was adamant to have more affordable housing years back when I joined, uh, the City Council was that we have 1,262 units that this city offered to the public since 1978. Uh, 1,262 units, 400 units has been offered to the Glendaleans. And where we are behind, City of Burbank, which is half our size, they had six, over 1,600 affordable units. And same with Pasadena, we are behind, City of Pasadena also. So with that, with this, which is, will be along with Broadway project, will be 504 units, uh, we still will come above 1,800. Uh, still we are behind. But however, this is major step forward, because during 44 years, we had 1,262 units, averaged 31 units per year during that long 44 years. So this will put us in better shape. Imagine in 44 years, it has been built, the city built 1,262 units. In, let's say, two years or three years, how long this gonna go on? We're gonna have 504 units. Imagine- long this is going to go on, we're going to have 504 units. Imagine the difference between this project when it comes forward with the past. So that's why I'm very glad that we have these two projects. Hopefully, we will get it done as soon as possible, and we will offer, hopefully, two years later to our residents of Glendale. And with that, I want to, if, when times comes, I want to move this item forward. Of course, I have to listen to my colleagues, but however, I want to move the item when I get the chance.
Thank you. Mr. Councilmember Najarian, or Councilmember Pisakian?
Mayor Devine, I do have three callers on the line.
Oh, okay.
I can hold my comments until we hear from the callers, if you'd like.
Councilmember Najarian, do you agree?
I'll wait also.
Okay. All right. So let's hear from the callers, please. George Jenny.
Larry Louis. Larry, you have three minutes. Go ahead. You're live.
Thank you, councilmembers. This is Larry Louis. Just a few questions. Are there any grants thought with the project? An example would be an SBT2. I know that's passed, but are there any grants associated with the project? Second question is, what studies have been done to show no adverse environmental impact will result from the building of this moderate density residential property? Adverse reaction, adverse effects such as greenhouse gas emissions, air pollution delays response time for basic firefights, both traffic gridlock, and also the production of both the low ground as well as tracks above ground to impact the city's infrastructure in this area. I realize you guys have been mentioning that affordable housing makes future from all these, but, you know, in the real world, these things do impact not just this part of the city, but the entire city, the real world. And what are the effects of the taxpayer funds on this project? Are taxpayer funds utilized in this project? You spoke about reconsenting, extended beyond, you might expect the hand, are these taxpayer funds utilized in this purpose? And my last question would be, is the proposed high zoning for residential housing an adverse effect, excuse me, adverse impact, or are they inconsistent with the city of Glendale's general plan for public health and safety? Those are my questions. And like you said, I see, I see that affordable housing is important for any city. And it's a matter of seeing this kind of density within this type of space. Somebody did bring up, it's a problem now already in this area, as I live right in this area, a block away, and especially on Street Clean Day, which are Thursdays and Fridays on Pioneer, Kenner Word, Doran, all around this area. So thank you, Ed Lee, for saying that one parking space should be minimal, because I don't see whether the income is going to, realistically, again, in the real world, every unit is only going to have one car. That is, that would be pretty ridiculous, I think, of every unit we have one car.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Louis. Mr. Fortney, any comments?
And I wasn't able to hear all of the questions. The first one was pretty straightforward. I think the question was, are there any grants for the project? And we talked about the sources of the, for the project, both in construction as well as perm. And under that scenario, no, there are no grants for the project. However, if we are unable to secure tax credits in September, there will be sufficient time to apply for additional funding sources for the project. So the answer is no, not now, and hopefully we get funded in September. If not, we will apply for other sources of funds when we apply again for 4%. I also heard what studies have been done, and we did have a PowerPoint slide that indicated the studies that have been done. We studied air, noise, traffic, and... Water quality, yes. And in addition to that, we did a health risk assessment. That health risk assessment, in part because the project is located in close proximity to the 134 freeway. So all those, all those studies were completed. They're attached, they're part of the council's packet as Exhibit 5. They're all kind of grouped together there. And then, something about, I didn't understand the question related to public funds. And... Oh, wonderful. Okay. Apparently, these questions were emailed to us. I simply didn't have time to read all the emails, so I have these questions here. What studies haven't done to show no adverse environmental impacts result from building the model? We talked about the studies that were done.
So on that one, he can, he can always go to the website and the agendas and read those studies, correct?
Yes, and I recognize the email address. I did correspond with the individual. I know I sent a link to the agenda. I don't know that I sent a link to the packet, but I'll be, I'll be sure to do that, so that he will be able to see those studies and actually read them.
Awesome. Great.
What are the effects on taxpayer funds in this project? The only, the only thing I could say on that is, we're putting in the dollars that we are requesting to put in. You know, some of it's been expended for acquisition of the site. Other, the additional 10 million, those will all be in the form of residual receipts. So those are loans that will be ultimately paid back to the city. Is this proposed high zoning for residential housing and adverse impacts consistent or inconsistent with the city Glendale general plan for public health and safety? My response to that is, it's a density bonus project following density bonus law. Density bonus law allows for, we spoke about this, unlimited density, if it is 100% affordable under state density bonus law, which this project does. That's my best response to that question, unless the city attorney's office has more to provide.
Thank you, Mr.
So it is not inconsistent, yes.
Okay. Let's go to the next caller.
Jonathan Urban, you have three minutes. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for taking my call. I had a few questions that were related to this project. Number one, I'm curious about the half-mile distance to a transit hub. Is that just the Beeline bus stop, or how does that, or is that something that's coming, a future project? Number two, I'm curious to know how people can be expected to live in these really micro-sized apartments, that I don't think anything this small has been, been built before, and, you know, what's their quality of life, and, you know, how they're going to be comfortable there? I question that the, the number of parking spots is going to be adequate for the number of people that live on the site? And curious about how moderate density is the label of this type of housing unit, when it seems to be an ultra-high-density housing unit? Another question I have is, with these exemptions or bonuses, won't the sidewalks and areas that people ride their bikes and drive their cars be, you know, be negatively impacted, getting, just getting around the community? Another question I have is, what sort of additional police, fire, social services are planned to accommodate this extra density of people that will be in the neighborhood? And another question I have is, what is the maximum capacity for how many people can be living in this, in this facility? And along those lines, is the current sewage line adequate? The level of broadband internet, is that adequate, or are going to be negatively affected? And the electrical service, you know, with rolling blackouts and flex alerts and things like that that are currently happening, do we have the capacity for these units? And my last question was, are people moving in this construction site in phases while the project is going on, or is it, it'll be completed and they move in? Like, is it in phase? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Fortney, can you give succinct answers to all of those questions? I know answers to a couple of them, but I'll leave it up to you to handle those questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Devine. I can't just answer all of those questions, but I think I do want to definitely hit on some of them. There is, on the last question, no. The, the product is proposed to be financed and constructed all in a single phase, so there won't be people moving into the site as it's being constructed. It'll get constructed, then folks will move in. There was a question in terms of capacity. I just wanted to briefly touch on that. We, because of the unit counts, we do have a minimum, maximum household size for each of those. So we could have upwards of two, but typically see one individual per studio. We look at two to three household members in our one-bedroom units. We look for three to five in our two-bedroom units, so that's a min-max of three to five. So with that, you can, you can calculate the biggest impact in terms of how many people could be on site. Naturally, it's not going to be the maximum, but you could calculate the min-max based on one or two in a studio, two or three in a one-bedroom, and three to five individuals in a two-bedroom. The other one that I think I really wanted to hit on, well, two, density, yes. It is, it is a dense project. I think it calculates it something like 120 units to the acre, and that is a function of the 75% density bonus we're requesting. The question, in terms of the half-mile to mass transit, what I'd like to do is ask Eric from Glazer Wile, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, Glazer Wile, to bring that up. They did a legal memo that specifically addresses the question about the half-mile proximity to mass transit. Eric, are you, are you available to respond?
Yes, I'm on. Thank you, Mike. My name is Eric Geier. I'm with Glazer Wile. We are council for Link Housing, and we did analyze the transit proximity for this project. The government code, which includes the section on density bonus, references a section of the Public Resources Code for the definition of a major transit stop, which in turn cites another Public Resources Code section. So Section 210643 of the Public Resources Code identifies a number of different potential things that could constitute a major transit stop, including an existing rail or bus transit station, or bus rapid transit station, excuse me. That, that definition is, is complemented by Public Resources Code, Section 2155B, which states that major transit stops that are included in an applicable regional transportation plan are also included among major transit stops. And in this case, the planned NoHo to Pasadena bus rapid transit line is, has been voted on by Metro, and the, the project is slated to have a stop at, I believe, Pacific Avenue and Glen Oaks Boulevard, which is less than half a mile north of the project's site. So as that BRT station is a planned major transit stop, which is included in the regional transportation plan, it is consistent with the PRC and by extension, the government code. I'll just point out, the regional transportation plan in this case is Southern California Association of Governments Regional Transportation Plan, which is a document that they approved last year and includes that NoHo to Pasadena bus rapid transit line.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments, Mike?
That's all that I can think of, Mayor Devine.
Okay. I wanted to, I wanted to add something, and I think Councilmember Brotman can, can kind of back me up on this one. The gentleman was talking about the size of the units, and when I looked at the 600-square-foot studio unit, was taken down to 360. And we were just at Sage Senior Living, and Mr. Brotman, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that their studio was 325 square feet. Do you recall?
I don't remember exactly, but something like that, yeah.
Yeah, it was. And they are charging boku bucks for those and, for those studio apartments. So, believe me, the 360 square feet is livable, and I, I would assume that the rest of them are as well, because we saw one bedroom that I think was about 600 square feet or thereabout. So they will be livable. Next caller, please.
Catherine Yurka, you have three minutes. Go ahead, Catherine.
Good afternoon. Thank you for taking my call. My comments address how staff handle the concessions or incentives for this project. Concerns I likewise express for the project at 900 East Broadway. I'm frustrated because staff don't need to handle concessions in this way for the project to be approved exactly as it is. The developer is entitled to four concessions. Each concession is ordinarily a deviation from one development standard. But Glendale bundles more than a dozen requests for deviations from development standards into a single concession. Here, these include setbacks along every facade on what seems to be each floor. I understand why the project needs a zillion variances and why council would approve it, but Glendale should not simply give away variances to developers. The state says Glendale must give four concessions. Glendale says, let's make it 15. Remember, staff claim there is virtually nothing they can do when a developer requests a concession under SB 1818. The burden of proof is on the city that the developer does not need them, and staff do not ask for proof beyond basic eligibility of the project. Each setback deviation should be counted as a separate concession and evaluated separately because they may not all be necessary. I would like to know if there's another city that handles concessions this way, that takes a state mandate and says, four is not nearly enough, let's give the developer much more. Now, my argument doesn't mean that the project at 515 Pioneer can't be built, or put other affordable housing projects at risk, because in addition to four concessions, a density bonus project is entitled to unlimited waivers from development standards if they're necessary to build the project at the density and with the approved concessions. These extra state setback variances should be treated as waivers. This is not a distinction without a difference. With waivers, the burden of proof is on the developer that they are necessary. I would ask that you do whatever you need to do about this project, but then please take steps to ensure that thereafter, each deviation from development standards counts as only one concession. The city could and should approve this project under the system the state designed and the one I am advocating for, with waivers. But at the very least, it should move forward, moving forward, define concessions narrowly to approve the vast majority of SB 1818 projects in Glendale, which feature only a stand fraction of affordable units, and where developers should not be made generous presence of extra variances from our development standards. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Tuktalian and city attorney, I think this is something we can look into in the future, is the bundling of these concessions, and perhaps if one of my colleagues agrees, we can...
I'll agree.
Look at this. Thank you. Okay. All right. Next caller, please.
Jack Darokchun. Jack, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, housing authority members and Glendale City Council members. My name is Jack Darokchun. I'm an affordable housing advocate. To begin with, I would like to thank the staff and Mike for... To begin with, I would like to thank the staff and Mike for explaining everything in such a detailed and easygoing fashion with such a complex system. Thank you, Mike. The project at, the previous project that Link and Core had, have created a great supportive, affordable, and integrated housing units, and I kindly ask you to authorize and approve this project as well. The benefits of creating 340 affordable units outweigh any challenges that come up. You are allowing individuals and families to live in a safe and affordable environment for many, many years to come. So I hope that you would consider that, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Jack. Next caller, is there another one?
Yes, Mayor, there's a couple more.
Oh, okay.
Humberto Ayala. Humberto, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, council members and Mayor and all presenters. My name is Humberto Ayala. I am a tenant in an apartment building directly across the street from 515 Pioneer Drive. I have lived here many years, so I am aware of some of the things that go on. One of my biggest concerns for this project is that it is adjacent to a gas station. I don't know what studies have been done, but over the years, I have seen many, many accidents on Pacific Avenue, some of them being very, very close to the gas station. Council members, this is a disaster waiting to happen. I don't like the idea. We also have had a big problem with traffic coming down our street. Anytime there is an incident on the freeway, in the evening, there are cars coming down Pioneer Drive going 40 to 50 miles an hour. And then I have another concern. I do nightly walks, and sometimes I walk by some of these new apartments that are on Central, on Milford, and Lexington, and all that. And I see that police frequently are responding to 415 calls of people getting out of control. I also very frequently smell marijuana. I mean, that's going to impact our quality of life here if we have those problems. What kind of things do you have in place? Are we going to get more police officers? Are we going to have more fire personnel? I'm really, really concerned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller.
Tom Nazarian. You have three minutes. Tom, go ahead.
Hello. Hi, everyone, and thank you for taking my call. I'm coming with the consciousness of having family members that benefited from the low-income housing authorities, and I really appreciate what you guys have been doing. You guys are doing a great job, no question about that. However, now that I'm a property owner and I have two small kids, two-years-old and four-years-old, and we occasionally walk to the park and we, I am in that area, I have seen cars passing by in the highest speed. I asked Police Department two years ago to come and put the monitor sensors to, so we could have a bumps on the street, and they haven't done that. They sent me an email saying they did the monitors, there is not enough traffic. But to that, the prior caller, that he says like he smells marijuana, he's, we, I experienced that problem as well. I have concerns. I have, I have, I don't have a problem with the, you know, building the project, but my question is like, 340 units at that segment, has any part of the Glendale, is there any project being developed for, for that high density, for 340 units? And as prior caller, do you guys have any plan for, for the trafficking, for the parking? We already have a problem for the parking. We have just two cars, and trust me, we are struggling on the days that the garbage comes and pick it up, our garbage. We are struggling to find a parking because people put their bins out there, and these are real issues we have. Again, I'm not against the development, but I hope that there is some moderation here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We, Mr. Fortney, I think we discussed the parking pretty thoroughly. Do you have any other comments to any of his concerns?
I would like to kind of just address one thing, and it's also something that came up in that email that I was saying, some, maybe two dozen residents had sent. There's a lot of general concern about the project itself coming in, the residents that come in, potentially crime, waste refuse, things of that sort. I mean, we have, Glendale Water Power have issued, you know, will serve letters for water, power. I don't know about internet access and how that might affect it, but I did want to say, and I'm happy to send a template. We enter into management plans with Link, National Corps, whoever the developer is, very strict on how we manage these projects. We're strict on who gets into these projects. They all, you know, are subjected to background checks. They're all highly incentivized to follow the rules. When you are, when you're fortunate enough to be one of 18,000 people to apply for one of these units, and you get a unit and you rent it for one-third what market rate rent would be, you're pretty highly incentivized to follow the rules and not, not do things that might get you evicted from the unit, much more so than just a market rate unit. So if you look around our portfolio, we have, we manage these units, these buildings extremely well, in my opinion, you know, with the help of those local management companies. In addition to the management plan that we will have in place, we're trying to make improvements. You know, again, the pedestrian tunnel. We want to clean that up. We want to make it safer. So we really think the project is going to help the community. I know it's a lot of units. We would also like to come back and talk about the Kennerworth cul-de-sac and how we might be able to improve that, potentially acquire that site, bring more open space, perhaps engage the community on what they might like to see there. But we don't think we're bringing all these problems to the neighborhood, not the way we operate our affordable projects. That's something I would very much like to, I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah. I think the bottom line is that we, we get tenants in these apartments that are so grateful to have a place that they can afford, that they don't want to jeopardize that for any reason. Another caller, please.
Mayor, at this point, that was the last caller.
Okay, great. So let's go back to, thank you to all those that called. I hope we answered your questions. Mr. Najarian, Councilmember Najarian, do you want to take?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, and you don't have to get real deep into it. Does this project pay into the Parks and Library Impact Fee Fund?
It does not. 100% affordable projects are exempt from that fee.
Okay. So I think we can assume there's going to be a huge burden. I mean, it's, in your presentation, the assumption was that with very little open space in the project, that everyone's going to flow into the Fremont Park area. So I'm creating an additional burden, and I'm not, I'm not very happy with that. I also share some of the concerns of Kathy Yurka. I think we need to, I'm not an expert on it, but her, she makes sense with her points about bundling the incentives and the, in this case, it's a lot of the setback in building envelope parameters and saying, well, that's, that's one waiver, or that's one concession. So I, it doesn't make sense to me, and I think we need, we need to look into that. You know, I think it's, it's clear that we are never, I don't think any city is ever going to meet all of its affordable housing demand. We do hear a lot of requests from residents to create more affordable housing, but I think we can all agree that we can build these projects all year long and still have a shortfall in terms of those folks who need affordable housing. So, you know, that's, that's sort of in the back of my, my head. This, this project is incredibly dense. It's incredibly populated. I mean, density is units per, per area, but aside from the units per area, there's just an incredibly high number of units. This neighborhood looking to the west is essentially single-family homes, and I really am concerned about the impact that we're placing on the rest of the neighborhood. Clearly, creating affordable housing is a worthy endeavor for any, any governmental body and city council. So I'm happy that, that we are taking steps to solve that issue. But let's, I mean, let's, let's be honest, we are never going to create enough affordable housing for everyone. We could spend every single dollar of our Measure S funding on affordable housing for the next 50 years and still not have enough affordable housing. So in my mind, I'm starting to wonder, is, are there limits to the pursuit of affordable housing? I was very much gung-ho for this project when we were first doing this, and I said, let's get as many units as we can. You know, I have to be honest, if someone were to ask me, how do I feel now? I would have to be honest and say that the zeal and the urgency that I once felt for creating affordable housing is starting to ebb, partly because not just this project, but the 1,500 or 1,300 or so new units that the Cal CHA has swooped in and purchased in downtown Glendale, that's a lot of affordable housing that's being created, a lot. What is the impact? What will the ultimate impact be? And I know that Mike talked about the screening process and the tenant selection process, and perhaps each of us in our own mind, when we think of senior housing, you know, we think of grandma and grandpa in there, and, and I hope that that's the case. I'm just not sure if that's what eventually will, will settle down in those, in those units. I don't know. I really don't know. It's my hope that that's what happens. So, I mean, we've come down the road for this unit, for this project. I'm not in a position to turn back against it, but I think we really have to consider the impacts of affordable housing, especially projects this dense. I know that we're talking about the BRT, opening the door for some of the concessions. I mean, that is not an easy walk. If you think that a family is going to walk from this apartment complex up Pacific, over the freeway, on a narrow little walkway, and then end up in the sun, I mean, there's not much shade, and say that, oh, we're taking the BRT? I hope that they do, but I don't know if that's a realistic concept that we all share. You know, like I said, this is, the horse is out of the barn on this one. I'm going to express my approval for it, but going forward, I really am, I think there's a, you know, on an engine, they call it a governor, that will restrict my enthusiasm for further affordable housing until we can see the impacts that all this affordable housing is going to have. I'm talking about the Broadway projects, this project in particular. My goodness, 350 units. We have to see how it goes. We owe, we owe an obligation, not just to those who are impacted by high housing costs, but also to those who are already present in the community and who we owe a duty not to affect their quality of life in an adverse way. And will it? I'm not saying affordable housing will, but I think that this is uncharted territory for this council, creating this much housing in such dense pockets. We need to see how it all plays out. So that's, those are my thoughts, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Kusakian.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, colleagues, for your comments. You know, categorize my comments as, to use a spaghetti western phrase, the good, the bad, and the ugly. So the good part of this project is that this land, I don't know what else it could be used for, given its proximity to the freeway, and it's a discussion that we had about the impacts it would have on residents, but I think affordable housing is as best a use as we can find for this location. We have a park that's close by, true, a popular park, and hopefully, once we can get that park remodel and renovation completed, when all these things come online, hopefully, at the same time, it's going to revitalize the whole area by providing some very essential housing. The units, sure, are small, and years ago, we would not have even thought that this would be adequate if we were talking about 360 square feet. Of course, in that time, we've seen an explosion of homeless and a greater need for housing, a different way of living, and different set of priorities for people looking to put a roof over their heads, and I think that 300, if we can get people into those who are in need of housing versus what the alternative could be for some of our residents and community members, I will take 360 square feet over nothing. I do like the fact that we're adding housing through this project, and it's something that we've done on a number of these projects that we've now approved for a community that has been long overlooked in this, on this dais, and that is a developmentally disabled. I know that previous council and this one certainly has made a request and a priority to have housing units for those individuals who are developmentally disabled, and in years prior, that was not necessarily a priority. I know there was a Casa Lama Stod project, but the new model is not to isolate those who are developmentally disabled, but to integrate them into the community. So for that, I'm also very happy to see this project move, come forward, and quite honestly, with a proposal from a developer that has a great track record so far in Glendale, and hopefully, one that will continue. Their previous projects, I think, have been model projects, have enhanced neighborhoods, and so I'm looking forward to seeing what they will do with this to help improve it. In terms of the impact on the neighborhood, sure, there, you know, I think my colleagues have brought up some interesting points. There will be some impacts. This is a very, very dense project, obviously dictated by some of the state regulations surrounding, trying to address this statewide housing shortage. I don't like the idea of setbacks being compromised or some of these concessions being lumped together. I do think that Ms. Yurka and Councilmember Najarian, and agreeing with her, and others have raised some good points. I'd like us to revisit that, to make it a little bit more stricter and tighten up the screws on some of the requests for these concessions or demands or this sense of entitlement that because a project satisfies, whether it's full, affordable, or partial, that somehow or another, we need to concede some of the factors that contribute to the overall quality of life. And I've mentioned this before, I like to see wider sidewalks in the city. I think any city that any of us visit around the globe that we enjoy walking through, one of its most notable characteristics is wide walkways. So if that means that we have to be creative in our designs and do what we can to make sure that, you know, if you all go into that part of our city, there are some very, very narrow sidewalks. It is not something that's very appealing, and I hope that also in doing this project, we do something about that tunnel leading to Fremont Park, and I know that's going to be part of this project's improvement. I sincerely hope that is taken care of because it is an issue, along with the area that it spills over to on the other side. In terms of what I think is the ugly part of this is some of the assumptions about people who move into our projects and the type of people that we're trying to provide housing for. I think we need to be a little bit kinder and optimistic and humanistic about how we look at our neighbors and our fellow residents and people right now who are trying to find housing and not question what kind of people they are. It's, you know, we can't have this very nihilistic, "après moi le déluge, let after me, whatever happens, happens. I have mine. Let others think of themselves, and I don't care what else happens." We have an obligation. We have an obligation to look after our brother and look after our sisters in this community, regardless of who they are. And that attitude that somehow or another, these people are going to be less worthy or different than us, shame on us for thinking that way. That's unconscionable. We cannot think in those ways. We absolutely have to look for ways to provide housing, especially in a state, in a county, in a city, where if you look at the price of houses, I was just looking at an article, and the house prices in the last 10 years have doubled. Teacher salaries have gone up by less than 12% in that same time. So the people who may be housed in these 300 and odd number units will be teachers. It could be, hopefully, some firefighters, some police, whoever it may be. People who are just trying to get started in life, put their lives together, like I mentioned earlier, maybe a single parent trying to raise two kids. So I do support this project. I definitely think we're learning from each of our projects to do better on the next one. I want to commend Mr. Fortney and the corresponding staff and your support staff who've put this project together. I know it's been a long road, but hopefully, we'll be able to bring these housing units online and provide more housing for some residents who are in the greatest need in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll keep my comments short and succinct. We've been on this for almost...
Mr. Devine?
Yes.
Who are you finishing? Just want to mention, here, there were concerns raised that the units are small or it's not as big as it should be. I just want to say, as a TV host and commentator, that everybody comes to my office. I cannot say how many people they came forward. When we were doing this project on Fifth and Sonora, which usually there should be at least two or more people to reside in each unit, there was none for single people, and they would come and say that they need just a space that they can call themselves. It's theirs. They cannot find somebody else together to join in the lottery of Fifth and Sonora because they think usually, if it's not the same family member, it becomes a problem at a later time. So even if it's small, you will see thousands of people, they will apply. They just want to have a space that they can afford. Rent will be low on this unit, and they're going to be happy to have it regardless what the size of the unit is. I just wanted to mention that. Thank you, very, very much, Mayor.
Well, you know, it's funny, because on... Councilmember Brodmann?
No, no, no. I just wanted, I have some general comments at the end, but please, I'll wait till you're finished.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I just, I just, I had asked questions earlier, but I just had some umbrella comments, and hearing what some of my colleagues have said, I think there are a lot of good points. Yeah, I mean, I, I agree, you know, with Councilmember Najarian on the point that we, we do need to make sure that we're not negatively impacting the quality of life of our, you know, existing residents, or I should say, our residents that are already in existing units. What I would say, though, is there are two, two things. I mean, one is, we know that the state is mandating us to, not to build necessarily directly, but to make it possible for a lot more density to occur in the city, and we have some pretty steep goals here, 13, 13 and a half thousand roughly units that we need to support in the next, over the next eight years. So those are our RENA numbers, and so I don't think we have a lot of choice. The other thing is, just to, to keep in mind what the alternatives are if we, if we do not build affordable housing. We, we continue to see overcrowding, and I know, I don't have a, I don't have a TV studio where people come in all the time, but I did do a lot of canvassing during the last election. I knocked on a lot of doors in South Glendale, and I saw a lot of families crowded together in unacceptable conditions, and the only option they seemed to have was, you know, that maybe a, a younger family member in their twenties and thirties, you know, the only chance they have to get their own space is to move far away from their families and potentially far away from their jobs. And we know that that creates traffic for the city with all these people coming back to commuter, see their family members. So I don't, you know, I don't think, the, the status quo just doesn't work, and we, we need to, to recognize that. So I totally, I, I support this, this project. I, I support the density. As far as walking to a BRT stop, I agree, that's it, that's not going to be a very pleasant walk, and, and I hope that we can look at that, that pathway and see if we can do something about the sidewalks. I think Pacific sidewalks are especially narrow. I don't know in that area, but we should look at that and look at trees and, and make that either a doable walk, or we have, you know, now, in, in large part, I think thanks to Councilmember Najarian, we have Metro Micro, which I've been, I've been testing out, and that's really a great service that can get people to the BRT. So I think we just need to work on how we make that a more accessible transit stop rather than, you know, rather than say, and I, and I know you're not, Councilmember Najarian not saying this, but I mean, rather than say, well, that, you know, we, we, you know, potentially shouldn't build something because, you know, there, there is no good access to transit. We can make that access, and, and hopefully, you can help, as you've been doing, to, to make, make all that a lot better. So, and then on unit size, you know, yeah, I, I, you know, the people I've spoken to would love to have something that's 350 square feet, you know, as long as it's theirs, rather than sharing a room with a family member. And, and I've, you know, I've just built an ADU that's going to be 330 square feet. I don't think I will have any problem whatsoever finding people that are interested in renting that. So I'm, I'm satisfied with all that, and I support the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, before you go on, I do have one person on the line called. Would you like to take this call?
Yes, give them one minute, please.
Sure. Carol Welling, you have one minute. Go ahead, Carol.
I just have a question.
You have one minute, go ahead.
I have a question.
Carol, can you, can you lower the volume on your TV?
Locken Yada Flint Ridge, and they never have any, uh, uh, affordable housing up there, and I was wondering why Glendale feels a need to constantly have, why Glendale feels a need to constantly have affordable housing when our sister city of Locken Yada Flint Ridge has none? So I'll just leave that question up to you. Thank you very much. I'll wait for an answer.
Thank you. All I can say to, uh, thank you. All I can say to Ms. Welling is that when these RENA numbers came out and the mandate is, is out, if communities do not make an attempt to provide this housing, the state is going to come down on them and enforce fines and, and the, withdraw some of the, the grants and funding that they get. So hopefully, in the future, we will see Locken Yada get on the bandwagon and have some affordable housing. I want to conclude the comments today quickly. I, I think this is another great addition to our, our affordable housing portfolio. It, I, I think it's happened at warp speed in comparison to some of the other projects that, that we've, we've approved. My major concern, one of my major concerns, is the lack of green space for those that, that will be residing there, and that is a concern of mine. I think there's only one little playground, and, I mean, even though they have a proximity to Fremont, there's still, you know, people like to get out, go outside and, you know, kind of socialize with each other, and there's not much green space in this, in this development. However, I think that with all of the impacts that we've talked about, and I see Mr. Fortney is taking copious notes, I think when we see the impact of this build, and as we see, as we continue the, the process and see the impacts, the city and council can address those impacts so that they, the, the residents that live in that area are not as negatively impacted as they think they're going to be. When you talk about the residents and who they are, I know that they are vetted. However, if you have ever met anyone that lives in a Habitat for Humanity development, they are absolutely the best people. They take care of their homes, they, they, they go above and beyond being good neighbors. So I would, I would just hope that, that we get people like that in, in this unit, and, and I'm sure that, that we will. And when you talk about the size of units, I just read yesterday where Elon Musk is living in a 320-square-foot boxable, it's called, and they're just prefab boxes, and, and they're about 300 square feet, and he's living in one, and, and that's the latest thing, and the tiny houses, and people just want to have a roof over their heads, and they want a place where they can live by themselves and at least be able to afford a place to live. So much depends, and I think we all have to keep this in mind, much depends on the tax credit and that Link is able to get that tax credit. Let's wish them the best of luck. Mike, Fortney, and your staff, thank you so much. I know you put in a lot of hard work in this project and, and the Broadway project, and we all appreciate that very much. And so I do support the project, and, and I will take a motion now for item number two, A and C from City Council.
I would like to move the item.
Second.
Item A and C?
Items, yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All righty. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brodmann?
Yes.
Kosakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes.
And can we have a motion for the, from the Housing Authority?
I would like to move the items, please.
To B.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Authority member Agajanian?
Yes.
Agajanian?
Yes.
Brodmann?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Parazian?
Yes.
And Chair Kosakian?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. And what's next, please? Great, let's move on to that project.
Next would be adjournment for City Council and then Authority.
Council?
Move to adjourn for Council.
Second. Do we have a motion for Housing Authority?
Move to adjourn for Housing Authority.
Second.
Thank you. All right.
You are adj, thank you all. Thank you very much. And now, I will call to order the Glendale City Council meeting for August the 10th. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Rising.
Brodmann?
Here.
Kosakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
And Mayor Devine?
Here. Next, please. What's next?
Next would be one closed session, 1A Conference with Real Property Negotiators, property location 216 North Bram Boulevard and 116 West California Avenue. Negotiating parties, Glendale Arts, SAS Entertainment, and General Admission Agency negotiators. Attending the closed session are John Tuktalian, Jillian Vanmiden, Philip Lanzefame, Michelle Flynn, and Bradley Calvert. Instructions to the negotiators will concern the price and terms for the lease of property. B, Conference with Legal Counsel, pending litigation, Sanchez versus the City of Glendale, LASC Case Number 19STCV24143. C, Conference with Legal Counsel, pending litigation, Lazarian versus the City of Glendale, LASC Case Number 19STCV31375. D, Conference with Legal Counsel, pending litigation, Organesian versus the City of Glendale, LASC Case Number 19GDCV01045. And E, Threat to Public Service of Facility pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. A, Consultation with GWP General Manager Mark Young and Fire Chief Silvio Lanzus.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, do you expect to report out on any of these items? I'm sorry, Jillian, Van, Vanmiden.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do expect a report out on item 1E. However, I would also note that item 1B, that's the Conference with Legal Counsel on the Sanchez versus City of Glendale case, has been pulled.
All righty. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. And with that, we are recessed to closed session. Thank you all.